Good evening and welcome to the Portsmouth School Board meeting for March 9th, 2010. If I could ask the superintendent to please take the roll call.
Mr. Kent, Mayor?
Here.
Kent LaPage?
Here.
Phil Boynton?
Here.
Leslie Stevens?
Here.
Ann Walker?
Here.
Mitch Schulman?
Here.
Rebecca Emerson?
Here.
Carol Chelman?
Here.
Dexter Legg?
Here.
Lynda Brulette?
Here.
Excellent. If I could ask you to rise with me and have a moment of silent reflection and then we'll
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Is there a motion to accept the minutes from the public hearing of January 28th?
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion for the February 9th school board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections, edits? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And the last is for the public hearing work session from February 11th, 2010.
Moved or approved?
Second.
Any discussion, amendments, edits? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll move to special presentations. There's no public commentary tonight. There's nobody in the audience. It's a little charade of television. It could be 100 people out there. Mr. McDonough?
Good evening. Tonight, the school board's calendar calls for an update on the school board's efforts, as well as the district's efforts to build professional learning communities. In October, you may remember, we outlined the process and what's entailed in a professional learning community. This evening, Assistant Superintendent Zadrevic will share some of the administrative team's work to date, and most importantly, some of the good work he and the participants in an in-district course held this semester regarding building a pyramid of interventions, the work they have done this semester. And as you might remember, building a pyramid of interventions or thinking about interventions really asks the question, is how does the district respond when children don't learn the essential knowledge and skills that teachers are expecting them to attain? I'd like to take a minute or two and just remind folks that building PLCs, professional learning communities, is the critical strategy that we, as a district, are employing to improve student achievement. You'll remember that a PLC is a teacher team that works together and is focused on student progress. A PLC team looks at performance data and has its focus on student learning rather than teaching. A PLC team is collaborative, teachers learn from one another, and they build a body of shared knowledge about their practice. And ultimately, a PLC is accountable for results. The PLC model essentially shifts professional development from a workshop model, where teachers go out and they sit and they get, and hopefully they come back and present something, to really creating conditions within the workplace, in the classroom setting, where they learn and share a body of knowledge. So that's what PLCs are fundamentally about. This year, we're really working hard to get to scale with this initiative. It's been invested in, and a lot of time and energy has been invested by this district over the last few years. We're working to get to scale with this practice so that it becomes part and parcel of how the district does business, and it's essential to the culture. Also, we've asked that every PLC team set a specific, measurable, attainable, realistic and time-bound goal. So that acronym stands for a SMART goal. And the slide here illustrates kind of a representative sample of some of the SMART goals that each of the grade spans has established for itself. And the focus, I would remind you, is on results. Each PLC has set a goal based upon what they see as student data, a gap in student knowledge and skill, and set to achieve it. So you can see some of the representative examples. Eighty percent of students will achieve a four-point score on a multi-step math open-response question that requires critical thinking. Obviously, that's driven by an open-response kind of question that a student would see on a kneecap exam. At the middle school, we'll build on a five, six-grade level GLEs to have 90% of students show understanding of 10 commonly-used geographic terms as they relate to historical cultures. And then at the high school, they've set the bar very high. 100% of students will write a clear and concise thesis statement, which will result in a higher local writing assessment score. So again, I'll turn it over to Steve very quickly here, but our efforts are to build PLCs this year and get to scale across the district, so that we have teams operate in each one of our schools. And it's also our strategic plan, if you will. It's really the leverage point for increasing student achievement, and I think we're making great progress to that end. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Zadrevic, and I'll push the buttons.
What I'd like to talk to you about in more depth tonight is really the work of the administrative team, and for two reasons, and the same two reasons the administrative team chose to operate the way we do. What we hope to do as an administrative team is, first of all, model and experience for ourselves what being in a professional learning community is really like. And we've spoken with and observed and had a lot of workshops and conferences all across the country. Many districts are talking about professional learning communities. But one thing that I think we're a little out front here in Portsmouth is how will you translate that operation at the teacher level to the administrative level? And what we did as an administrative team is followed some of the same process. So, you know, we talked about a SMART goal, what would be a goal for us? So we didn't want to just experience and model professional learning community practice, but we also wanted to use our work to monitor the implementation of professional learning communities in all of the schools. And so our work really is focused at our level, at how do we monitor that work in all the schools and how do we share successful practices across schools? So we set a goal based on some assessment information we gathered last year from teachers. We set a goal of 90% of the staff will be able to identify that most or all elements of an effective PLC are in place in their building. And just as a little quick baseline, last year, when we asked that question, when we had an assessment of teachers, it really was closer to 60% that had identified that. So we're still in the process of this goal and looking to get that to 90%. And so as an administrative team, we meet monthly after school, and we do a number of things. And the first would be to identify essential elements, just as teachers may identify power standards for students, or things that you would say are absolutely essential for student learning. We have identified things that are absolutely essential for PLC implementation. What do we need to have in place, not just operationally, but in terms of people's beliefs, people's, you know, how they operate, how we look at student learning? So we've done some work to identify those things. The next question, how do we know we're there, really has forced us to create some of our own common formative assessments, and these assessments have taken the form of teacher surveys and staff surveys. And in your packet, I believe, there's one copy of our most recent survey we've given to staff. One of the key things for us as an administrative team is to discuss that data as a team and to share across schools some successful practices. And that's something that, after we would give an assessment, we would come back together around the data from teachers and say, you know, where are we seeing success? Where do we need to pay more attention? What can we learn from each other in that process? And most importantly, just as a PLC team or professional learning community team for teachers is focused on student learning and focused on student progress, really what we're focused on is the progress of implementation in the district of PLC work. So just a couple of quick graphs for you. First of all, this is from the question, the same question we asked last February, February 2009. That question was, how far along do you think your school is in working effectively as a professional learning community? And so we had a number of different responses in that. If you look at the sort of the maroonish area, is that most elements are in place. The bluer area is that we're already there, that is to say, everything's in place. And then the sort of tanish area was, we started, but we have a ways to go. And the white is, we haven't started in any significant way. And this year, you'll see that same graph and the change therein. Just a quick thing on the 2009 data, where you had about the same percentage of people identifying, we're already there, 11%. When the administrative team looked at that, we identified and said, you know what? We shouldn't have necessarily that many people saying, we're already there. And that's, again, a year ago when we were talking about this. And so what we wanted to do this year was dig a little deeper into some of the elements people were identifying that they're already there. And so I don't want to give you the impression that that 11% from last year is the same group of people from this year, but I guess the short answer is, we have a little more confidence in the data that we have this year, that people are identifying all of the right things in this. So you can see that, you know, we're at about 80% of staff identifying that most or all of the elements of PLC implementation are in place now, and we certainly hope to and expect to by the end of the year, when we'll do another quick assessment to get to that goal of 90%. One of the other questions I just wanted to highlight for you from this most recent survey was a question that asked, well, it's a long question, so I won't read the whole thing, it's in your survey, but basically, the short answer is, how invested are you in this work? And the answers could be, I'm highly invested in this work and see this as the direction our school and district needs to go in. I'm highly invested in this work with some reservations, and we asked them to describe them. I'm somewhat invested in this work with many reservations, and I'm not invested in this work. And you can see by the sort of combination of the blue and maroon that a good amount, in fact, over 90% of the staff feels highly invested in this work. And then we were able to dig into what some of those reservations were that people may have identified, and usually found that they dealt with some of the, I don't want to call them little things, but, you know, people wondering about schedules, or people wondering about, you know, how a particular assessment would be looked at and things like that. So, you know, administrators are able to look at that, look at the data from their own building and say, okay, so what are the things I need to pay attention to to address some of the reservations people have, because there's a high level of investment, but we need to talk about a few things? So a lot of the work, as Mr. McDonough said, we've sort of gone along this progression of identifying what we want students to know and be able to do, having assessments in place to know if they're there, but then also addressing the supports necessary to help students who may be struggling, or to challenge students who may need more challenge. And that's what's brought us to what we term the Pyramid of Interventions. And I won't get into great detail about what the pyramid is all about. Tonight, it is an ongoing conversation. In fact, one of the things that we've talked about recently is the need to have some way of communicating to parents particularly about the supports available for their students, for their children. But just quickly, the Pyramid of Interventions is structured that you have three tiers. And the first tier, that is to say, if students are struggling with a particular concept, what do you do? Well, the first thing is, good teachers differentiate what they do in class, or they might try something different, or we, you know, they might look at helping a student in a particular way. All of those are universal kinds of interventions, things that, you know, every student may experience. Every student has the same math class, and teachers will try different ways with those different students to get them there. Of course, having, being able to reach each and every student involves a high level of personalization in instructional practice. But even with that, we know some students struggle, and how do we respond to that brings us to sort of that second tier. And that's where we try to find additional supports for students. And we've had those supports in place in the area of reading for quite some time. Title I is one of those supports. Reading Recovery is another one of those supports. But we haven't necessarily had them systematically in the area of math, and as you may remember, that's something we're trying to focus in on with the stimulus funds that we do have, at least for a short period of time, to help build some of those interventions. And then, so we'll give extra help to students above and beyond their class, and then if that still doesn't work, then we get to a more intensive level. And this is where sometimes special educators are more involved. Students may need special education services. Students may need other interventions that are very intensive, and that's, those are the ways that we try to identify those needs. So this is just a quick visual to give some perspective to it, that really, in most of the literature you see around in terms of Pyramid of Interventions or Response to Intervention and other term you'll hear a lot, RTI. Usually what you'll see is that about, the goal really is that about 80% of the students are adequately met along the Tier One. That is to say, if you have a half of your students who aren't succeeding in the classroom, maybe it's not a student learning issue, maybe it's an instructional issue, maybe it's something we need to do differently on the teaching end. So, but once you have, again, at least that 80% there, there's going to need to be other supports, and that's where the systematic approach, how do you take a student who may be struggling and move them into another intervention? So there, you're talking about 15% of the students needing those services, and then about 5% of the students may need that additional intensive support. So we're not, again, talking all students needing Tier Three interventions. So just quickly, I'd like to talk a little bit about the work teachers and a number of people have been doing around developing pyramids of interventions in each building. As you might expect, this is kind of, this is difficult work because it implies a lot of shifts. It implies shifts in scheduling sometimes. It implies shifts in how we group students and look at things flexibly. We have 30 participants in a class right now that is kind of our own in-house graduate course, if you will, on Pyramid of Interventions, and those, we have interventionists, paraprofessionals, psychologists, guidance support people, teachers, just a whole host of people involved at each level. And they've been working in school-based teams to build sort of a draft of Pyramid of Interventions that would then be brought back to their building. So we're kind of finishing that course up this week, actually, and tomorrow is our last class, and for that class, we're going to have the administrative team come in and join that class. There are some administrators in the class, but there's, of course, a whole host of administrators that aren't. So we're going to meet tomorrow jointly and share those drafts of plans and do some group planning with the administrative team about the next steps or the next blocks, if you will, of the Pyramid of Interventions. We're going to continue to use some of the ERA funds to support math intervention in particular, and one of the things when we gather more information, as we look at the student assessments, we're able to celebrate some of the things that are working. We have some great examples of that right now. The teams that have been working in each building are seeing some great results of student learning and being able to monitor that and being able to measure that, and that's something we want to do more and more deliberately. And then one of the big questions I know that's kind of on the table is, what time do we need to set aside for students to make sure that they master all of those essential skills? And I know in most buildings, there's some question right now about how do we organize our time most efficiently to help get help to students? So in some schools, we have what is called an intervention block, that is a block of time set aside specifically for helping students. In other buildings, we have time set aside that we use frequently, whether it be lunch periods for extra help, things like that. And in those cases, some of the intervention strategies are really more about how do we get more directive with students to make sure that getting help isn't an option, but it's actually a requirement, and how do we make sure that all students are there and succeed? So that's a quick overview of where we are right now in that work, and if you have any questions.
Thank you. Yes, any questions?
I just had one question.
Okay, Carol, then Kent.
It's been my observation that a lot of parents don't know that all of this is going on, and I'm just wondering if there's any thinking about bringing, making parents more aware of this whole process. I know there's, I know Ed has done a newsletter and a few things, but if there's going to be any more, I just know that a lot of parents really just have no idea that this is going on.
Right, and that is something, in the course recently, we've talked a lot about that. In fact, looking at other schools and other models, there are some out there that have some very nice, parent-friendly kind of guides, if you will, to, hey, I'm a parent, I have my child in third grade. If I know they're struggling, what are the supports available for them, and how do I encourage, you know, how do I get involved in having them access them? So that's definitely on the forefront. Even right now, some of our, when we have developed power standards, we've tried to develop them in parent-friendly language so that we can make sure that they go out and that people sort of understand what we're talking about. But it's definitely a need as we go through this work to better and better communicate with parents.
Thank you.
Kent?
Yeah, Steve, I'm still trying to get my arms around this, and one of the things that catches me right away, and I'm looking at the survey form, and I understand that if I go from, excuse me, I guess it's question one, it's like, it's what team are you on for the PLC? Is a team a school or a department? Because when I look at the graph circles, those are great that I see it as a whole. I want to see the system as a whole, but I'd also want to see it broken down by the department and by the school, because it tells me nothing that if 49% of the, most elements are in place, if that's, you know, all the middle school and the high school will be at the elementary schools. And I want to know where the low sides are. Where the successes are, that's nice to know. I want to know where the non-successes are, and the only way, I didn't know if there were subcategories, and I'm looking at the survey, and I'm not sure you could break it down to that finite, maybe you can break it down by department, because I'm assuming a PLC team is mostly by department?
Yeah, and that's a good question, and I don't think I was clear in describing it, but the, what I gave you was the summary information. What we looked at as administrators is school by school to see where are things working, where do we need to pay more attention? Because our work as an administrative team has to be, hey, that's great results that are happening over here, how do I learn from that? As an administrator, how do I bring that into, you know, adapt that for my building? So yes, we have all of the school-level results of those as well, and we've taken a look at those.
And I think follow-up to that is, is that I love to see it by school. I think that's important towards the board, to be able to look and have determinations as we look and see where our Achilles tendons may be and, you know, where we are more vulnerable. But I also then, one that I don't see there is, number of years within the system, you know? How long have you been employed? I mean, you don't want to get to the point where you can identify people necessarily on a survey, but have you been employed one to five years, one to two years, three to five years, and move it on up? Because in doing this, somebody who's brand-new may not feel at all that they're within the system. Somebody who has in the middle, that's got eight years to 12 years, may say, hey, we are mostly there. And somebody who's on the outside going out may also fall in that they don't feel part to their accomplishments of that. So again, just, you know, some observations, I'm not sure whether they're of any value at all.
Yeah, and I should also say that in each building, the administrators have sort of taken this data and said, okay, what are the conversations we need to have with staff? The reason that we identified the survey at the team level was so that we could look at if there's a consensus at the team level of whether we're a functional PLC team. And again, to clarify, teams are at the elementary school, they're grade level by school, at the middle and high school, they're subject-specific, and those are teachers that are getting together around this data. So, you know, we'll take a lot of the data from the survey, and it won't give us everything, but it'll give us enough to have some conversations with staff around, so what are you seeing? What are those, you know, those successes you're seeing or the challenges we see in this work?
Thank you. Anything else? I'll ask a quick question, give other people time to think. So you, so have you been using a lot of the data? I mean, everybody talks about the districts trying to be data-driven, right? So are you using the data to identify students? Or let me ask it as a question, how are you actually identifying the students that everyone feels might need this extra intensive work?
Yeah, and at each team, they work to create a common assessment, a common formative assessment, which means it's not given at the end of a unit, per se, to see how much they learned. It's given earlier to say, who needs more help to get there? And so the data isn't to identify necessarily the end result, but it's to identify the problems we might have with students earlier on and intervene earlier. So teams use that data. We don't collect it, because, again, it's not for that purpose, but teams use that common formative assessment data to say, you know what? We have a focus on these number of geographical terms. I'm noticing this group of students is really struggling with that. And then what can we put into place to help them before it gets to the point where there's a huge gap? So a lot of that data is driven by their own local common formative assessment. Of course, they look at other assessments as well, the kneecap assessments, the reading assessments, the DRA at the elementary school, and some of those other assessments as well.
And then a second question would be, as we're, looking at the tier, the second tier, so there's about 15% of students, as you move up these tiers, it becomes more financially intensive, requiring, in this case, this year with the funds from the government, the math interventionists. So what is the goal, because that money disappears? So what is the thinking as to how this Pyramid of Interventions stays in place and moves forward beyond this year and next year?
Ideally, what we're doing is building our own capacity to work and build a Pyramid of Interventions. Interestingly, every, everybody in this class that we're doing right now, there isn't a huge call-out there to say, hey, we need five more positions to be able to make this work. There's a realization that we just need to be able to work differently together to connect the dots, to connect the good things we already have in place. The math interventionists in the elementary position is a good example. When you look at those tiers of interventions, that Tier One, that classroom practice, what we hope to do is to have people who can go in and help teachers as well, say, you know what? You've got this group of students who's struggling. Here's some strategies that we can use right there in the classroom, before we even have to talk about a Tier Two intervention, to help meet those needs. Teachers have those bags of tricks, and the PLC teams are also meant for them to share with each other what's working. So the position of math interventionist or math coach really is to help build the capacity for teachers in that intervention. And even when we get to Tier Two interventions, our plan is to, at the end of the time we have the stimulus funds, is to have more Tier Two interventions operational, more in place. And I think, you know, the short-term strategy, of course, has to be, those people are part of the solution in giving extra help to students, but our long-term strategy is, how do we turn that into, you know, ways that teachers look at that assessment and say, here's how we can reorganize ourselves? I know, you know, Lynda Brulette's class is an example in Little Harbor 4th grade, where they flexibly group students to meet those needs, depending on the assessments that they give. So it's really having positions that help us take full advantage of the people and things that we have in place right now.
Very good, thank you. Any, Dexter?
So Steve, it's probably, you're not far enough in the process, but I'm assuming, my question is, when will you be far enough in the process that you'll be able to begin to look at outcomes, whether it's kneecap scores or the DRA scores? To be able to demonstrate, is this intervention process actually moving the meter on the results that we have?
Yeah, and that's a great question. We already are, and that's one of the things that we've been paying close attention to in two examples. One is in the latest kneecap results. When we look at particular subject areas, we know, for example, New Franklin as a school has been focused on math for three years or so now. Really, you know, that's the only thing they've focused on in their PLC work. They've built an intervention block to help meet students' needs. New Franklin has the largest, steepest curve up in the kneecap- -in the kneecap results in math. So, that is validated to some degree, some of the work. Dondero, second grade, is another example. They started the year with, and maybe Mr. McDonough remembers the exact percentages, but they started the year with around half of their students not at the benchmark they should be. They've already seen a huge increase in the number of students at benchmark at the mid-year point, and they attribute it to the intervention block they just put into place this year.
So you're seeing almost immediate impact?
Yeah.
It's terrific. Thanks.
Anyone else? Could you just briefly, when you say an intervention block, what does that really mean?
It means that there's a time set aside, whether it be in a day or per week, where all students, usually the way it works is all students are doing something appropriate for their area of need. So, for example, again, I'd call on New Franklin as an example, every, I think it's Wednesday morning or something, they have a period of time where every staff member in the building is working with a group of students, and some of those students, based on their formative assessments, need intensive help in a particular area in math, and so they're focusing that time. Well, other students have already mastered that skill, they're ahead. Well, they're doing other things, so they have more of an enrichment activity or something else going on. So, the idea is that you're not pulling students out of the classroom who are struggling and saying, we're gonna, we're gonna remove you from instruction, so that we can try to catch you up to instruction. It's a way of saying, you know what, in order to catch them up, if you will, we need to find additional time. But the challenge is always, and I think every school is facing this, where do you take that time from? Do you take them out of art class, so they can get more help in math? Do you have them do, you know, miss social studies? I mean, there's all those different choices that you could put on the table, when we identify essential learning, and then commit ourselves to students getting there. An intervention block is, people have found, is one way where everybody is doing something at their level, and you're not necessarily taking something away from student schedules that, you know, just so that they can get extra help.
So it's an institutionalized way, actually, to deal with the full differentiation of instruction?
Exactly.
Because we've talked about that for years now. So this really helps move that issue forward as well.
Right.
Okay. Very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so, moving on, we have the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packets, please find a number of items of information, most importantly, the PHS Scholarship booklet, as well as a booklet we've crafted about the FY11 budget and some performance measures around district inputs and outputs. You'll also find notice that a third-grade teacher at Little Harbor School, Nicole Smith, who is currently out on leave of absence, has resigned her position. I also wanted to share with you that in January, Principal Collins, Principal Stokel, and I attended a conference at the invitation of Dr. Tracy, former superintendent and commissioner of education here in New Hampshire, and the conference really featured a presentation by a number of independent organizations that essentially provide board exams, board examinations, such as the advanced placement exams by the college board or the ACT's Quality Core. We saw presentations from all, I think, six or seven of those presenters. I mean, the conference was really sponsored by an organization, he's joined the National Center on Education and the Economy, and what I wanted to share with you is essentially an article that was in the New York Times that talks about that program, and how some of those pilot projects are slated to come to New England, particularly Maine and New Hampshire. Of course, New Hampshire had invested and put money in the race to the top to, in order to facilitate some of these pilot projects getting off the ground. You may know already, I'll share with you, that first submittal was not, New Hampshire wasn't awarded it, but there'll be a second submittal, and so some of those funds were intended, but we were, we were having conversations with him, and I really share that article, the kind of which your appetite, and would really like to schedule an invitation to bring Dr. Tracy in for a conversation about this, because I think it's an opportunity the district may wanna have a conversation about. So that article's in your packet as well. That's it, really, from my end.
Ed, can you comment just on the race to the top, whether the state, I'm assuming will get feedback on their application and how they can improve it for the next round?
That's exactly what her letter said, basically, from the DOE, was they would be getting some feedback and, as to what was, what they need to strengthen and, you know, make themselves a successful candidate in that second tier. So, that's all I know, Dexter.
All right.
Oh, yes, I suppose I should mention, you also have a couple of items of information. One is a letter that was shared from Janet Lovering in the APT, the Association of Portsmouth Teachers. I also had a request for a, some detailed information from Board Member LaPage regarding structural analysis of the middle school project, and so that report is in your, on your table as well. So I know we eagerly await some administrative reports here. Contain your excitement, Principal Collins.
Any questions about the, any information on the report before we move on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Before we move forward. On the information handed out, okay. Very good. Portsmouth High School Principal, Mr. Jeffrey Collins.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for inviting me here this evening. Before I get on with the update on our PLC journey, I've been asked to comment a little bit about the situation that arose at the Portsmouth High School and Kennett High School ice hockey game that occurred this past weekend. Unfortunately, the end of the game ended rather poor, with our students, our student athletes certainly not upholding what we, what we try to instill in all of our students about ethics and codes of standards that we certainly hold high. There's been, there was an article in the recent paper this morning, containing a lot of information, a lot of, you know, some factual and some, with some questions that I certainly have. What I have, I've been interviewed by a number of people today, and it's on Channel 9 News tonight, what I have seen, and I have received a copy of the last five minutes of the game. Clearly, we have some student athletes that were, were just wrong in their behaviors and their actions and what they have done. I'm continuing, Mr. Wilson and I continue to look into these matters, to see what contributed to some of the issues and some of the things that we, that we're able to see on the tape at the end of the game, looking into it, as I've mentioned, holistically, and looking at all the situations surrounding it, see what has, what transpired, what could have been done, and using this as a teachable moment and points of information as we move forward. Certainly, it is something that, you know, our student athletes shouldn't have been doing. There is, it's just, it's a situation that unfortunately sets us back, and we'll have a lot to do to overcome and regain a lot of the trust within the community, and also within the community up in North Conway. But we will continue to investigate it, look into it, make recommendations and make suggestions to make sure that this sort of incident never happens again, or doesn't happen down the road. It is something that we're gonna be taking very seriously, and it's an unfortunate situation. We are investigating some of the claims that were made in the paper, and we will be moving forward and trying to make some recommendations on how we rectify this situation and move forward in a positive direction. So, my apologies to the school board, I do have a letter going out to the principal of North Conway, and to their students and their fans. When, one bright note is, last evening, we did play Kennett once again. There were some concerns about, you know, how our fans would react to each other and what would go on on the court. We had the state semifinals of the girls' basketball game, in which we did play Kennett High School. The game was a hard-fought game, it was a fantastic game. Unfortunately, we lost by one point, but that is truly indicative of our student behavior and their conduct out there, is truly indicative of who we are as a Portsmouth community. So, again, we will be moving forward. I did receive a letter today from the director of the New Hampshire Interscholastic Athletic Association. He'll be launching a full investigation into this, concerning what people knew as factual information, and I certainly anticipate, you know, being brought before the NHIA and having some conversations regarding this. The outcomes, I do not know. I can't say anything to, I'm not making excuses for our students, what they did was wrong. So, we'll see where it goes, and I'm sure it'll, it'll be an ongoing process from here on out. I've been in constant communication with the superintendent of schools, and also with the director and the NHIA regarding this. So, I apologize for that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just given the fact that this was an article, and there is incomplete information out there, and I think you're gonna do this, Jeff, is that as the investigation is completed, is that some sort of formal report comes back to the board, so that, so that we understand all the facts after they've been investigated, including any actions that administration either takes or recommends?
Very good.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shall I move forward? Take a deep breath and-
Get to the meat of the meeting.
All right, just a quick update, we were winning at halftime of the boys' basketball game, so that's the first round of the playoffs for them. PLC journey thus far at Portsmouth High School. As I mentioned, the journey began earlier this year, actually, with the seeds that were grown, that were planted at the end of last year. And our process has been a, been certainly an interesting journey. It's been very rewarding over these past couple of months, seeing the starts and working through a number of obstacles, and moving forward in a positive direction that equates to increased student achievement. Seeing the progress from slow starts from some of our PLCs to really getting catching on fire. There have been many obstacles and many things that we had to consider along the way, but we're certainly considering this as a learning process as we move forward. Our PLCs are very much, still very much, in different places at this time. At the high school level, the essentially core area subject matters are grouped together in a, in a PLC, and they are working on various different deficiencies that they have noticed over a time period. So again, they are very much in different places. Many of our PLCs had to spend some time norm-setting and setting norms. Many of them had a lot of, had a lot of data in place already to base their SMART goals on, so they were flying ahead, and, you know, so it's a, it's a process that's still ongoing. Thus far, the delayed opening days have been very, absolutely essential to our work. All of the time that has been spent thus far in creating our SMART goals and trying to accomplish and achieve our SMART goals have been done on these early release days. The rubrics, many of our departments picked up when they created the SMART goals this fall. They picked up on where a lot of the work at the end of last year left off, with creating rubrics for our certain classes. Many of our departments or our PLCs took that work, finished up the rubrics, and started to utilize and implement those rubrics. They tuned them in order to get the information or to look, be able to find to them, tune them to their SMART goals and the goal that they were trying to achieve. They have been utilized, they have been tuned within the departments or the PLCs, they have been utilized in the classroom, and some discussion is underway regarding student achievement and how, where the deficiencies lie. We're beginning that tier-one intervention, as Mr. Zadziewicz had mentioned in the past. It's also opened up more focused communication within our PLCs, within our departments, focused on one essential goal, and the teachers of sharing strategies that work based upon best practice and student data, not necessarily on what is working for one individual teacher over another. The ongoing conversations that have been spurred on by the work that we have, and I mentioned it in the, in the information I handed to you in the board packets, is the "might as well." It was coined by one of our department heads, and as we're going through this, there is, you know, in this, again, all about the learning process, in the learning process, looking at the goals that we have set for ourselves, and are we, is it too broad or too narrow? But there are "might as well" moments that happen, as they're analyzing and looking at the data. Well, you know, if we, we have our, some of our students are not accomplishing, are not accomplishing this, are not progressing through the standards as much, we might as well do this piece and do this piece. It's become, at sometimes, a little bit cumbersome in looking at, well, we have a lot of "might as well's," but we need to accomplish this one goal, and we need to get focused a little bit more. So, we certainly have enough, we have a lot of things that are on that checklist that we need to be focusing on in the upcoming years. Another ongoing conversation is keeping it simple and making it, are we making this a little bit more too complicated than it actually has to be? Conversations around formative assessments, what do they look like? The, you know, the fact of the matter is that we have teachers that are teaching a number of different subject matters, and how do we embed our common formative assessments into our curriculum, rather than making them a standalone? And how do we time that so that everybody is taking a similar common formative assessment, so we can tie them together? Are we assessing what we intended to? Again, an essential question as you're looking at these, you're looking at these common formative assessments. And the last thing I think has been a great benefit is, are we all on the same page with the rubrics? You know, how do we score them? Are we scoring them together? What are you seeing as a three? What are you seeing as a four? And tuning that within our departments. Where do we stand? I think Mr. Zadziewicz, as he was going through the PowerPoint presentation, and has supplied us all with the information on our various schools. It's, it's nice to see that the vast majority of our faculty is highly invested at the work at hand. There is movement there, there is positive growth there. So they are highly invested in the direction in which we are going. The vast majority of our teachers do see clear value in the PLCs and what we have accomplished thus far. In a celebration earlier in the year, we shared within a department meeting, all the work that has gone on within the various departments, and it was just amazing to see, you know, the social studies department are, you know, just listening to all of the, all the things that have happened thus far. The other thing is, where do we stand? We still have much room to grow, and we have, we have a ways to go. I think with the common formative assessment work, with the, looking at the time necessary to analyze and both assess and analyze the data, and we have, we certainly have much ahead of us to accomplish. The future, what does the future hold for us, and what does it contain for us in our development of PLCs? Well, we will certainly continue to, continue on with the, with the development, as I mentioned earlier, or my first presentation about it. I truly see this, that this is a key, to take that last little step forward, and be a truly great school. We will continue to modify, refine, and implement common formative assessments. We will continue to look towards how do we, how do we embed these in the curriculum that we currently have? We will look to address the issues of, okay, where do we, where is those checking points, those common checkpoints that we all can sit down together with our data? We will also, as Steve has mentioned here, we are still very much in the beginning stages of looking at a systematic way of helping kids to achieve more. There is much that goes on, on individual bases, bases, and it just isn't synthesized together enough into this common, this pyramid of interventions. Much happens at lunchtime, you know, the teachers are doing different things to help kids get better, but what is the next step? What is that systematic approach, when we know that the kid is struggling, we've tried everything we can possibly do in the classroom, what is that next step, that fifteen percent? And then, you know, after that, what is that third level of interventions? Again, I truly believe that this is something that, as we look towards the future, this is something that'll enable us to take that next step to be that truly great high school. I see good things have come of it, some outstanding conversations. We're starting to analyze the data and look in, look at the data for, towards student improvement, but I think we do, we certainly have some work ahead of us. So, that's probably over my five minutes, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions?
Yes, Dan.
I'm wondering, Jeff, how many PLCs are there at Portsmouth High School presently?
Presently- Presently, I would have to count them up for you, but essentially what it comes, what it breaks down for us is each department is a PLC. A number of our departments have split off, however. Let's take math, for example, they've split off into subject-alike kind of subgroups of our PLCs and they're working together, like the Algebra I teachers are working together on Algebra I specific things.
So, at least one or two for each department?
Correct.
Thanks.
I have a couple of quick questions.
Yes, sir.
So, following up on Anne's question, are there any interdisciplinary PLCs at the high school?
Not at this time.
No.
Not at this time interdisciplinary. We're sharing things across. The English and Social Studies Department work together to create their rubrics, but they're looking at, they're looking at specific issues that they are seeing in their classrooms.
Right. And I guess, maybe it's not a specific question, but I know, you know, high schools are traditionally organized by department as are universities. And in some ways, that can be an obstacle in itself because people stay within their own little silo. But would you say, or would, are there obstacles that you've been able to identify to help the high school move forward in getting, getting out of a mindset perhaps of being stuck in their own little departments?
Yeah, I mean, there have been successes. As I mentioned, the work together on the rubrics, it was very enriching. I mean, the teachers absolutely loved sitting down together and they pulled members of other departments together to work together on this. I don't think there's an isolationist, you know, atmosphere. It's just the work that has to be done within the department. We really took the avenue of looking at it subject-specific within the departments. I don't, I don't see, and I don't believe that there is, it's that
Okay.
compartmentalized, if you will, rather than departmentalized.
Right, okay. Carol.
Mr. Zadziewicz told us about Don Darrow having improvement in their second grade and I believe also New Franklin in the kneecaps. What can you point to as signs of improvement results?
Yeah, well, we're sure, the, there are many smaller accomplishments that we are seeing within our, within our subject matters. We're seeing increase, increases in the rubric and the score, excuse me, increase in the student achievement around some of the SMART goals that we have created, around, say persuasive writing in the Social Studies Department. Or, as Steve used as the example, that's the English Department's SMART goal. We have seen increases and improvements in that, in the writing of the thesis statement, improvements in the conclusion writing. What ours are, truly, our ultimate goal is to have our students truly know and understand the material that's in front of them, to show better results on SAT scores, on SAT scores, kneecap scores and raising the bar in that manner.
Thank you.
Great. Anne.
Just one quick question, Mr. Collins. The goals, are they actually broad enough in, within the department to span the coursework? Say, for example, in math, you have everything that ranges from Algebra I, for example, through calculus, but they're all working on a goal?
Yeah. And that's, and that's one of the reasons why they broke up into, into subgroups, to look at, you know, their goal within the context of their own curriculum. Yeah, I mean, it is, you know, it's, it's an interesting, it's interesting as we sit back and we look at this at the end of the year and looking at the way we went about creating our SMART goals, were they actually SMART? Is it, is it something that we need to look at to break it down? 100% of, stop giggling at me.
Sorry.
Superintendent, thank you. You know, is it realistic that we hope that we, we're working towards 100% of our kids meet that one goal? Did we bite off more than the weak chew? Did we focus it a little bit too broad or too specific? These are things that we intend to analyze at the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much, Jeff.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yes?
Now, I'd like to introduce Ms. Diane Pinkham.
Gee, you got one line. Blew it.
I, I work for him. He has my name down just right. Thank you always for this opportunity to come speak to you about career technical education. I was asked to give a couple of highlights before I get into our PLC work. And I'd like to share with you the fact that the New Hampshire Automobile Dealers Association sponsored the New Hampshire Auto Tech competition earlier. And two of our students placed first and second in the state, which won them a position to go to the national competition in New York City in April. We're thrilled about that. The students are out working at one of the local garages or car dealerships, rather. And so, they go out during fourth block, which would normally be their class time, and they're staying until eight or nine o'clock at night, working on these automobiles so that when they go to the national competition, they'll be very well-versed in these automobiles. But more exciting that happened today, Mr. Summers, the instructor, came to me and said, "Would you come to the classroom at the very beginning of fourth block?" So, I did, and there was a representative from the Ohio Technical College there, and he awarded each student with a $12,000 scholarship to the school if they chose to go there. So, we were very, very thrilled with that. So, $12,000 is a pretty good chunk of change. So, and they'll get more money if they win in New York, we'll see how that goes. The two students, they're both seniors, Sam French and Adam Doyle. So, we're wishing them a lot of good luck. Also, this is competition season in career tech and the Skills USA competitions will take place next week. Culinary arts students will be competing in both culinary arts and commercial baking. And the construction trade students will be competing in the cabinet-making and the construction part of the competition. So, we wish them a lot of luck. We historically have very, very, as Linda knows, we have had very, very good luck in our competitions. Regarding the PLC implementation and our SMART goal in career and technical education, a reminder to you what our goal is, through collaboration of best teaching practices, increase the ability of 100% of our students to access and use information to solve problems in their career area over the duration of a course. So, our teachers have recognized that they need to help learners find and analyze the vast amount of information that's available for them or to them on any given topic. And they need to instill in the learners that information may be garnered from other sources other than just the internet. It's an amazing source, but we're finding students are just going on Googling and that's it. So, on top of that, we need to instill the importance of verifying that information by utilizing more than one source. Some of the impediments to our progress have been finding a common area of instruction in our different subject areas. We have different areas of instruction in CTE and we are very, very diverse. There are things that we teach in common, but are there things that we're able to assess commonly? To apply a common assessment to an extent curriculum, some of which are taught over the course of nine weeks, some over the course of a semester, some over the course of a year, has proven to be very difficult because obviously, a student who's enrolled in a program for a year or two is going to have a lot more contact time around the kind of resources, resource searching their teacher wants them to engage in rather than a nine-week course such as some of our elective courses or our feeder programs. The current progress of the SMART goal work is that we've finalized the common formative assessment that will be given at the beginning of fourth quarter, at the beginning of April. There are two parts to that common assessment. Part A consists of four questions that will be administered to all of the CTE students to assess their ability to access and use information and apply these skills. The second part is very specific to the program area. It's a question or problem in each career area that's given to measure or gauge the student's ability to use the information that they've collected. So, the ultimate assessment in our areas will be for them to create something that's tangible, something, a product out of the research that they've been able to do. And it's also a goal that we keep the part B question, a question that's expandable so that the teacher could give the assessment in a nine-week course, but if they're moving on and staying into a course for a semester or for a year or for two years, the style of the assessment doesn't have to change, but certainly the level of the questioning will be, will be able to change as they feel that they need to. The PD days have been spent for us formulating norms, formulating the SMART goal, really grappling with the answer to what is common among us. You talked a little bit with Jeff about interdisciplinary work and we have been working a lot with the math department, the Math and CTE Initiative. The automotive instructor has been working and has gone through an entire program. The DOE has involved us in. Perrin Long, the culinary arts instructor, is currently finishing up in the next program area is construction trades. So, we're kind of looking at that as, okay, if we're working on our own CTE-specific common formative assessment, what are the other things that we teach that are common? And for many of the programs, it happens to be mathematics. So, we know that our students need to learn more and do better in their math learning. And so, by partnering with the math department, we're able to co-teach some of these lessons so the students are really brought up in their understanding of mathematics. They've created the pre-test and they've got their answers that they want to see, which is a big deal. There's been a lot of conversation around, and a lot of it's philosophical, teacher to teacher. You know, what is the answer to this question? Well, I feel it's this way, I feel it's that way. So, they've, they've done some really terrific collaborative work and it's something that we don't necessarily get to do in CTE. So, it's the sharing of best practices and the collaboration between the teachers has just been so valuable in itself. Everything else is just really added to it. Coming up, we have a spring college career fair on April the 13th. We're thrilled about that. Shannon Grenier, the college counselor, and Pam Wigan, the career center coordinator, have partnered and they're going to be having two-year programs and technical schools, four-year colleges, apprenticeship programs, the Navy Yard, the Airline Academy, all kinds of different post-secondary opportunities for students to come in and be able to talk with the students during the school day. We're hoping that teachers will bring their students down to the career center, either during second block or it will be also available at lunchtime so students will be able to continue their work on finding out what it is they're going to do for the rest of their lives. So, that's that.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, Rebecca.
I have a question. The Clipper News Program?
Yes.
Is that on Channel 22? Is it online?
On Channel 84. It's the, the channel that we have in the high school.
So, is there any way that, because I think that's wonderful.
It's great.
Is there any way that we can see it besides coming into the high school?
No, come to the school, I think. Is it the only way, is it not? Channel 84? Yeah. It's, it's what?
It's internal.
It's internal. Come to the school.
Okay.
The Clipper News Program, the kids have been, and I don't want to take up all of your time here and I could. The students have been coming to me on Wednesdays with the Clipper News Show. And I, it's my, the favorite part of my Wednesday because I get to preview and, you know, yes, this or no, that and whatever. And they've just done such a great job. These are the students in the TV production and media class. And then, at the end of announcements on Thursday, we run the news show. And they have their different highlights of, you know, what's on the menu this week and what's the weather going to be like for the weekend? And these are the other things that are happening, the sports program. And it's really so much fun and the kids are just getting into it. I was walking down the hallway on Thursday and it was on in culinary arts, so I kind of popped in and, and the kids were all just all over it, you know, and they go on location, they've got these great scans and they, they were taking pictures of the games. It's really terrific, so you really should come in, you know, nine o'clock, Thursday morning. You can catch it in any of our, any of our television that we have anywhere in the school. Love to have you come in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kent.
Oh, sorry, Kent.
That's all right. Under the PLCs, and maybe it actually goes a little bit towards Steve on this, when, especially at the high school, maybe at the middle school level and, you know, eventually even down to the elementary level, but at this time, do you see an inter, I would think under any one of your programs, it would be interdisciplinary with the science department and the math department. I mean, you have to have good mathematics for almost every one of the career tech programs.
Right.
You really do, to be successful. And, you know, as long as we isolate that, you know, I look at it, we isolate it as a budget, we isolate it as almost student body sometimes, you know, that's, we're not alone. I'm not saying Portsmouth, I'm saying society as a general. That's no longer true. When you look at it in the business world, what jobs were least affected, you know, during this horrible downturn in the economy? So, what discussions have you started or do you plan to start? And I'll just use math and science. I mean, obviously, I'm a big one on, on writing too, to be able to do scientific-type writing from department to apartment, and I think that's one that, down the road. But what do you have to say?
And technical writing is really a huge part of what we do. I had, I had someone say to me years ago when I first said, "Well, writing, you know, I'm a culinary arts teacher, you know, what will, you know, really, how much writing do my kids do?" And somebody said, "Well, at some point in your life, you taught yourself how to read technically." And, and I'll tell you, I remember that. Yeah, I had already gone through four years of college, I was in culinary school and all of a sudden I was like, "Why am I not understanding this?" You know, so it's really, there is a learning curve to it. More specifically, to answer your question, we have talked about, because we've struggled on our own trying to figure out what it is we teach commonly with each other, we almost, you're right, we almost have more in common with some of the other disciplines. Certainly, architecture and construction trades and automotive certainly have a tremendous amount in common with mathematics, probably more than they have in common with culinary. So, we've had that conversation ourselves and I think what's really important, as Jeff alluded to, is that we need to figure out what we're doing as departments and, and the conversation is coming. We're having it amongst ourselves and it's definitely something that will branch out and we'll be looking to do that on a greater level. And as I said, through the Math and CTE Initiative, the CTE teachers and the mathematics departments are already starting to co-teach lessons that are bringing up the level of math in, for all of our kids and, and really making it real for somebody who doesn't do well in math. And I have to say that I was one of those people that struggled in math. If somebody had said, "Well, this is why you need to learn it and this is how it's applied in the everyday world," it would make a lot more sense, it'd have a lot more meaning to me. So, for a lot of our students who are struggling in mathematics, that's the way we're going to make it real to them and make them understand it so they graduate from high school with a really worked, really good working knowledge of math. So, the conversation is taking place, it hasn't happened yet, are there plans for that? Absolutely, absolutely. And I, I think that, that you're right, math and science is definitely the place that we'll see ourselves going into, perhaps with the exception of early childhood education, it would make more sense for them to go work more reading with the English department or, you know, art, the other areas. They don't teach as much of the math as they are apt to teach some of the more English-type things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Appreciate it. Moving on to the financial report.
Mr. Butler. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As of the end of February, the salary and benefits sections of the general fund section of the report are showing positive results against plan. The three salary lines that I think need to be highlighted this month are the teachers, custodians and substitute line. There have been a number of leaves of absences this year in various groups for various reasons and the cost of subs has been less than the savings of the, than the regular salaries we've saved on. So, therefore, you know, we're coming out on the positive side of this. Additionally, when we use substitutes in lieu of, you know, regular salary lines, we do have savings in retirement, which will be leveraged against the unanticipated increase in retirement rate for teachers that we were subject to this year. On the operating side of the budget, as a whole, it still remains positive versus plan. This is due in large part to not only the enforced spending slowdown or the soft freeze, whichever term we want to use this week, but there's also been some, you know, favorable results in terms of energy and student transportation. And we've had some fortunate weather conditions where the, although we've had some storms, the accumulation has been less than, than what it could have been and less than what has been in surrounding areas. So, we've actually been able to handle it with our own in-house labor and equipment as opposed to having to contract out, so we've had some savings there as well. So, we've had some savings there as well. I think, and sometimes when you look at the report overall, that has a tendency to be concerned, when people see negatives, you know, negative variances against plan, but it should be remembered that these variances are in fact only to plan for this particular month and that, to date, none of these expense lines have exceeded the, you know, yearly budget piece, that, you know, our yearly budget target or allocation per line. It's not to say that some of them won't by the end of the year, but they'll be offset by other lines. Sometimes we, you know, as things get tighter, we have to adjust. So, we may have some go over, but we'll have some in other areas and rather than try to code them in the wrong place, as long as I point out the offsets, I think that would be, you know, the best way to handle it. The recent windstorm, you know, was kind of interesting, you know, all summer long we saw all these tree crews everywhere we turned and so they get rid of all these nice branches. But unfortunately, this storm was a windstorm, not an ice storm, so we lost entire trees, not just branches. And the wind was so strong that a lot of the debris that was flying around did some damage. For example, there was a little bit of siding that was ripped off the front of the high school and it actually speared rubber roofs. So, you know, when the weather man says it's not safe to go outside under high wind conditions, you know, you've just got to look at a couple of these things to understand the damage that that stuff can do. However, overall, the school department fared reasonably well in the storms. We had some minor damage to the high school and a couple of roofs, as I mentioned. We did have a valley on one corner of the middle school that disappeared somewhere in the wind and has to be, we're going to come up with a solution to fix it, albeit the least expensive temporary one because it's, you know, we're going to redo the middle school and that roof won't be on there, so. But we do have to look at that. So, in that case, there was some water damage in one of the classrooms, so we had to make some adjustments there. Little Harbor Computer Lab, and you have to remember, this is like a hundred-year event, you know, this is not a leak that, just from a regular thunderstorm, this is very, very unusual. And so, we did have a leak, just our luck in the computer lab at Little Harbor and there were some equipment that was damaged. Right now, the maintenance staff and the technical staff is doing a good job going around trying to ascertain all the damage and we're getting estimates for it and we will be putting in a claim with our insurance carrier, you know, the pool that we belong to, Primex. And we'll find out on Friday, Ashley, whether there'll be FEMA money to back that up, but we won't know until Friday because that's a federal decision on a statewide basis, but we've been told Friday we should know. So, let's see. I think that on a budgetary basis for the year, you know, it's been tight, but everybody, the administrators and the principals have done a good job being cognizant of the expenditures that we can immediately, you know, control and hold back on. And I still believe that we're going to have a positive outlook at the end of the year.
Great. Questions?
Yeah, I'd just like to, again, I think we talked about this last time, but in this sort of difficult budget and the difficult financial times, I really do want to applaud the administration for their aggressive management of the budget to ensure that you come in under plan. And the fact that you're continually monitoring it, you're making the right decisions, I think, sends a strong message, while still maintaining the quality of the education that we heard tonight, sends a really strong message to the community. So, thank you.
Very good. Okay. Yes. New business?
Yes, I'd like to recommend your consideration and approval of Anne Ellis be granted a one-year leave of absence for the 2010, 2011 school year. As you know, Anne is the assistant principal at the middle school, will be taken that year off for child rearing purposes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question. So, who takes, I mean, do you hire a temporary?
I think historic, you know, I suspect it'd be open for a very short period of time. In the past, Sherri Weston, I understand, had taken that position over. She's a teacher at the, sixth grade teacher who's done this when Anne took leave a few years ago.
Okay.
So, I don't think it's a wide-scale search for this.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed?
Next, consideration approval, you have in your packet a celebration graduation request for a donation. I guess typically, you have supported this graduation night for the class of 2010 with a donation of $500. I will share with you that in your school board budget, you do have $250 allotted for that purpose as well as $500 for retreats. So, there's money there available if you're so inclined to support the cause.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Any conversation? So, we're moving to approve to spend the $500. Even though it's money, because money, we should do an individual vote, but I think for this, we could probably just do a voice vote, it's $500 unless there's any. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And I would encourage people to individually contribute as well.
Next, in your package, you have a first reading of a policy, GCO, which is evaluation of professional staff. You know, one of the goals the school board had set back in August was that professional staff will be evaluated on an annual basis. This is the policy that would require the superintendent to have that put in place. So, it's a first reading, we'll come back for approval at the April 6 meeting. And item D along with that is consideration and approval of a number of job descriptions, particularly administrative positions, superintendent, assistant superintendent, principal, assistant principals, and all of the other administrative positions, the business administrator, special services director, tech director in Title I. And then, I can begin the process of essentially going through and evaluating administrators this month, as well as a teacher job description, but I see it's omitted from this packet, so that'll follow quickly at the next meeting here as well. I have vetted this, all administrators have had input on these job descriptions. The policy subcommittee reviewed drafts of these as well, so it's been vetted through the policy subcommittee. And I don't think you need two reads for this, I think you can just approve en masse tonight if you wish.
Move to approve.
Second.
Which are we moving to approve?
The whole.
The whole block. Before we, so there was a second. So, I do have a question about that. Because I'm not sure that everything that's listed on there is in my packet. For example, under the job descriptions, F of Director of Special Services, I have the Career Tech Director, which isn't listed there, unless that's what you mean by technology director, because I don't have the technology director in my packet.
Career and technology.
Is it career and technology? Is that what you mean, as opposed to Susan Burrell?
Ideally, I had hoped you'd have both of them in your packet, so let me just go through mine.
Maybe I'm the only one, but it's not in my packet.
Special services, career and tech.
Right.
You're in tech, Director of Title I reading.
Right.
And so, appears as a technology director for whatever reason in your packet.
I have a career and technology director.
I have one.
No, tech director. And so, it should read career and technology.
Oh, is it?
Obviously, what the error is.
Okay, but so, is there going to be a technology director also?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Our goal is everyone's going to have a job description before I'm done.
Right.
It doesn't kill me first.
Right. The point would be so you can evaluate them against the judge.
We'll have to do it next time.
Yes, Rebecca.
So, are we substituting tonight, technology director for career and tech?
Career and tech, the one that's in your packet.
That's right.
Okay. And so, then the teacher and the technology director will come at a later date.
That's right. Thank you, Rebecca.
So, we have the motion and the second. Any other further conversation? So, all in favor of accepting?
Aye.
Any opposed? And do we need to accept the first reading of the policy, which we haven't done?
Oh, you didn't phone them. No.
You just moved right in for the next one.
I'm slow down.
So, is there a motion to accept the first reading of the policy?
Several.
Second. Any conversation, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good. Next, new business.
Yes, you had a request, Rebecca Remmersen had asked a discussion of school district budget process to be put on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, thanks. So, clearly, this has been a really difficult year and process for everybody. And last night, the elementary school PTO and PTA groups held sort of an open forum and, which I think was absolutely wonderful. It was the first time we were actually able to dialogue with one another and I really hope that that happens again in the future. And one of the things that came out was just how crazy this process seems to be. So, I've been thinking a lot about it and I think if we had, I would like to propose that we have a budget subcommittee. This would not replace, you know, the six weeks of work that we do in January and February. But in the past, we've sort of submitted our budget and then, phew, it's put to bed, we'll see you next January. And I think that clearly, you know, we can't, that isn't sustainable anymore. So, I would like to propose that there's a subcommittee to really work with Steve Bartlett, to really look at where we are and then to report back. And then, during budget season, it would still be the full board. And I think it's sort of in conjunction with the new Committee on Efficiencies, the joint committee between the city council and the school board, I think it's a really nice segue. So, I don't know if the people who are going to serve on the efficiency committees should also be on this, the budget subcommittee, because it's all about finding ways of saving money. So, I don't know how other people feel about, you know, really rolling up our sleeves over the summer and the fall and working. It's not to put together a new budget for next year, but to really look at our process, look how we can communicate better, look where we can find savings. So, I don't know how people think about it.
Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Well, I guess I just don't see that the budget process ends. I think it's ongoing and evolving, that, you know, even though the figure has gone to the city and hopefully well-received, that's not the end of it, in my opinion, that there's still dialogue going on and discussion and searching for things, so that exactly what goes down in writing initially is not necessarily what ends up happening. So, no problem with the committee if you'd like to have one.
So, I get, yes, you look like you're thinking, Dexter, before I move on.
So, Rebecca's point's a good one, but it's, I would think about broadening it, because we've talked through this budget process, to Anne's point, that we need to begin to take a long-term view of these things. And we need to, rather than doing it over a six-week period, do it more thoughtfully and more thoroughly. And to the extent that you can have a committee begin to focus on that and bring back recommendations to the full board, I'd support it. But it really, I'm trying to get my mind around what I, how I'd describe it, because it really isn't a budget committee. I think, to me, it's fundamentally understanding sort of what our cost structure is, how that compares to our peer schools, because it may be, in fact, we're not spending enough, not that we need to cut, or we're not spending things in the right way. So, if the charter was right, I'd support it. What I don't want to do is abdicate the responsibility for a full budget understanding by this board to a subset, because it's so fundamental to what we do that we all need to fully understand and be conversant in it. But if you have a subgroup that is bringing information back, doing some work, bringing information back to this group around our cost structures and some long-term opportunities and some comparative information and that sort of stuff, then I'm all for it.
As opposed to that small group working with the administration to craft?
Just to craft a budget, yeah. I don't think, I don't want to do that. In fact, I think there's real value of having the full, the committee of the whole, this full board, get immersed in the budget process, not in the annual budget process. This, I think, is what we're saying, is it's not necessarily an annual view, but a little bit longer range. So, I mean, I haven't thought about it till now, but as I think about it out loud, the focus needs to be right to be valuable. To me, I'd only support it if the focus was more structural and longer-term, not replacing the work we do over the first six weeks.
Right, no, I agree with that.
No, and that wasn't my intent at all and that's why I said that the six-week process would stay the same and it's not to put a budget together, but to sort of give us, you know, when we hit January 1st and, you know, we're waiting for the city council to come and give us our directives and we have this really short time, and my vision of it was that, you know, over the next weeks and months and years, you know, continuing that we could find different places so then, and it would help the administration. So, then, when we have our first meeting in January about the budget, we can say, yeah, we talked about, and here are some recommendations, and absolutely bring it to the full board and it's not crafting a budget. So, we can call it something completely different, but...
Well, could I ask you then to think about a little more and come back with a little clear idea of exactly what it will be?
Yeah, what he said.
Before we actually move and create it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. I just, you know, I'm throwing it out there, I don't know if this is something that people think is, would be valuable or important, but, yeah, I just know those six weeks are really tough.
Could I just add one comment to that?
One sec, yes.
Two trains of thought towards that is that, one is, and I think Rebecca hit slightly upon it, we have a general agreement with the city council and administrations, both management and so forth, that we're going to look at facilities, where the joint things are. So, there's an evolution going there, not only with what the facilities might be budgetarily to us, but the personnel that maintain those types of facilities. So, if we kind of look at it as evolutionary, along with what Rebecca's saying, then I think one thing we might look at long-range is that, is how the heck we can get CIP-type of budget out of that same timeframe. There's no reason that it actually falls in, especially for the school department. If we're really doing long-range planning, if we know what the five years are, that we can't have that done at a different time period that doesn't take away from it. So, I think there's an evolution that we can look at that would allow us to be better concentrated on certain parts of the budget as this hopefully evolves. I mean, it tends to be, and everything looks favorable from both sides, that we do want to sit down and have a joint facilities, membership-type group with it. And I hope that's true and we go that way, because I do think that that will help budgetarily. If we can move CIP discussion for the school board, because realistically, if we're really looking three to five years out on CIP, we don't have to crowd it in with our discussion and it might give us that much more breathing time, is that then we can start to look at certain things that are sub-budgets within our own buildings that might be able to, whether it be food services, whether it be special ed, that you don't maybe necessarily need to cram them all in at the same time, if we can stay true to long-range planning. It's not going to get us out of that six-week cycle totally, but at least it might have a preparation time for us to do better.
Carol?
I was just going to say that I think this might be a good thing to bring up at our retreat and...
That would be good, yeah.
And where I see this potentially fitting in is a vision for the school district, an entire vision, and maybe even an education master plan. And just doing that kind of really big picture, long-term planning, long-term thinking, getting ahead of things before they happen, where we're just being reactive. So, I really don't know what I'd call that committee, but I think this would be the kind of conversation that we could definitely have at a retreat, I think would be really worthwhile to talk about.
Mitch, can we talk to our friends at the New Hampshire School Board to see how other school boards might think about, I mean, I'm thinking it's a finance committee, but I don't know if that's the right term, but you need to think, you need to create something that's a bit broader, but there must be some models out there where they have a subgroup that is charged to do these sorts of things and rather than try and invent this out of whole cloth, let's steal it if it exists. So, maybe those guys at the state, New Hampshire School Board can give us some information on it.
Yes, Rebecca.
I'm also wondering if the somewhat old now strategic plan might be helpful.
I'm also wondering if the somewhat old now strategic plan might be helpful to, we had talked about that, I think, a while ago, about revisiting that and looking at some of the things in there that either we are or are not doing, and if we could update it, rather than rewriting the entire thing, just possibly updating it. But that might play a role as well.
So does anyone know where that is?
Sure. You do.
It'd be nice for everyone to have a copy of it, maybe.
How big is it?
It's big.
It's big.
Or at least sent to us by email, if we can get it on email.
Okay, we'll work on that. Sure.
Okay. Great.
Thanks.
Sure. So is something for further discussion at the retreat that was mentioned? We can spend a little time at that. Okay. Committee updates. Not that everybody on this list has an update, but if you do, we'll start with the BEC.
Yeah, I'll bring that up. And I wish Diane was still here, because the last two times we've had it, I had a draft of our mission statement, but we'll be voting on the draft of the mission statement tomorrow during our quarterly meeting, so that you could see this. And I really think it's important that we have an understanding that the Business Education Collaborative, and I also am going to ask tomorrow that we have a listing of all members that participate in it. We have a broad range from those that work within the colleges that are within our area, along with private, along with the Chamber of Commerce, along with New Hampshire Unemployment. You'd be rather impressed with the group that represents this, that meets now on a quarterly basis. We used to meet on a monthly basis, went to a quarterly basis, basically because we've got a lot of the work out of the way, be more efficient. And this group is one that is required for a number of reasons to allow us to keep getting grant money. But the mission statement I will bring back at the next meeting for your scene, and also I think I will ask at that time that you vote to support the Business Collaborative, and maybe we actually have a presentation in the near future, whether it's the next meeting or sometime in April, so you have an understanding where they want to go to help better students. Perfect example, as Diane gave today, were certain things like the automotive competitions and so forth, and the job fair, which now is being run by a large number of those individuals there. So that's it under that. I also get the next one, which is booster clubs. This is an annual meeting that we try to schedule as early as November 1st, and due to missing dates and so forth, we had it back the first week of February. Steve Bartlett and myself attended. It was an outstanding, I think we were better than 80% represented by all booster groups that were there, that are, that are official under the auspices of the school board. This is a committee that was put together back almost eight years ago, and finally got its legs about four years ago. Due to that, we had a number of bank books that were thought to be, or could have been thought of, property of the Portsmouth School System, and this was not true. We made them come totally standalone. It has been extremely successful. Steve's office and his people in the office assist each one of these booster groups. Again, a booster group has no affiliation, other than the students with the school system, and they do. You'd be surprised what each booster group raises and does. It's one of the highest in New England for scholarships that it puts together. And again, booster groups are not just athletics. You're talking those of the drama and music departments, and even the PTOs, PTA's fall into this jurisdiction. There were two big discussion points that I think the board needs to address over the next year. One happens to be that of what we call gate receipts. Gate receipts, as you know, went away for all sporting events. The, and I think we do need to have the discussion, because what was left out there was those that are concerts and/or the performing arts that we receive funding for, or we receive tickets at this. It's considered by some to be maybe somewhat unfair, which I think can be, you know, a discussion and dialogue of what we need to do to have an understanding of that. I think the board needs to understand that this is one of their larger fundraisers. And that's when foul kind of gets yelled out across the board, is that why is it they get to do this? And quite honestly, I don't think we have a total answer on that, other than if they want to collect to cover their costs, because you have to remember at sporting events, we cover those costs, whether they be lighting and/or officials and so forth, those are picked up. So it is a discussion point that I would like us to put on the docket over the next year, whether we allow the performing arts to keep continuing this. This is a growing trend in the state. The state auditors do not want us collecting gates, I mean, receipts. They come into the city hall, and they'll tell you who's in charge, and they find out that people are being paid to collect that, that are employees, that doesn't follow through the unions, it doesn't, it's really a very hard thing to keep that way, and many communities are going that way. That lessens revenues, it lesses fundraising, but it also opens the door for fundraising opportunities. The other thing, oddly enough, came up also under our agenda tonight, is project graduation is not a true booster group, and does not stand alone. We cover that, and I think Steve may want to, you know, chime in in regards on how we actually cover project graduation. We all agree it's a good thing, but on one hand, it really doesn't have a charter, nor does it have a board of directors, which is required for it to happen, to be able to function as one of these groups. It is the odd duck, it's not the ugly duck, because it does an outstanding thing, but the group was outstanding in its discussion. When you bring basically 24 different groups into one room, they want the best for the students, and they do give the best for the students. But these were the only two things that were not totally resolved, and I think they are board issues that need to go back within the next calendar year. Oh, Steve, if you have anything to add into whether project graduation or the other one? And by the way, I just want to say, Steve did an outstanding job on just giving them their guidance on how to run financially, what they need to be respected and voted on, and voted on by this board on a yearly basis. He really did an outstanding job, and everybody went away with a full understanding.
Thanks. The only thing I'd mention is that celebration graduation has been treated not as a booster group, but as a, as a school activity, which is, and as a result, those funds are collected and handled by school staff. It's kept at the high school as part of the student activity fund, as a student activity, which means that they would end up following city purchasing rules and things like that. So that's, that's the difference. I know that there are different communities, handled in different ways, but I can't, that's one of the questions I asked my first came, because it was different than what I was used to, but doesn't mean it's wrong, just meant it was different.
Thank you. Policy, anything?
Let me do that? Okay, we met on March 9th. We brought you the evaluation of the professional staff for first reading tonight. The next step for us is the required policies that are left on our list that Amy's going to put together for us, and Kathleen Dwyer will review, and then in our meetings, we'll review them and bring them here for first reading, hopefully by May. And those will be the rest of the ones that are required. There's still others that we'll need to bring forward, but that will finish up the ones that are required. And then we have facilities use, internet access, acceptable use policy, and complaint policy, which are kind of the biggies that we're working on as well, and hoping to bring those to the April 8th meeting for first reading. Actually, for our first, our meeting on April 8th, we'll bring them, and then we'll bring them to you for first reading here after that. Those are kind of a big, those are big issues, so those might take a little while, the acceptable use policy, for example. And our next meeting is April 8th.
What time is that meeting?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock.
Thank you.
Okay. JBC?
Yeah, so I'd like to update the group on three topics addressed by the Joint Building Committee. The first is the location of students during construction. And I want to report out that the JBC has reaffirmed the decision that this board first made, which was to keep the students on-site during construction. And I want to give you just a little bit of background on that. You'll recall that when, when this group was looking at the middle school project, among its goals that we set as a, as a school board, was to ensure the safety of the students and staff during construction, as well as to maintain the middle school program during construction. When the JBC took over, one of the first things that the committee felt was important was to, through due diligence, determine if there was any opportunity to move students off-site during the construction. And as the group looked at that, they also took the same objective that we took, which was to maintain the middle school program. So what that meant was, you needed to find a school-type facility to main, to deliver the middle school program for 500 students. So an option was not to disperse the students in various locations around the city. So the committee actually looked at two sites, with Steve Bartlett really driving this. We looked at the Frisbee Elementary School in Kittery, which was vacant, and we also looked at the old, I guess it was the Great Bay Community, I know it as a New Hampshire Tech, down in Stratum, across from the Stratum Park. That second option was immediately ruled out, because there's a purchase and sales agreement on that, and so that wasn't an option. As we looked at the possibility of Maine, we realized pretty quickly that the state Maine income tax was going to be a hurdle that we just were not going to be able to overcome with our, with our staff and teachers. And so that option was ruled out. And there were no other vacant school-like buildings available, either in Portsmouth or the Seacoast. What we didn't look at is any commercial buildings, for the obvious reason that commercial buildings are designed for businesses, designed for individual workstations, cubicles, individual offices. To take that sort of space and try and build out a school for 500 students that you'd use for 18 months or two years was absolutely prohibitively expensive, and so we didn't pursue that path. So after that due diligence, the committee, again, reaffirmed that we will keep the students on-site during construction. That was one of the primary reasons that this committee selected JCJ, because in that process, they demonstrated real comfort and familiarity with designing these sorts of projects around students on-site. And in fact, they reported to the JBC that, you know, virtually 80 to 90% of their projects are done with students on-site, and they're very comfortable with it. Which leads me to my, the second topic, which is the construction manager. The, the JBC went through a pretty rigorous selection process and selected Gilbain as the construction manager at risk. And I'll tell you, as part of that selection process, one of the things that that, that group looked at very carefully was the construction manager's capability and experience with managing construction projects with students on-site. And Gilbain has a very rich history of building K through 12 schools, working in an urban environment, and working in a phased approach with students on-site. And they were able to assure us that, in fact, they, they have plans in place and are very comfortable with ensuring the safety of students and visitors and, and of butters. And so you're going to see an awful lot on that. So we're in the middle of negotiations with them. I can't report out when we'll, we'll have a contract, but we're optimistic that we'll have one. And when we do, I think the committee feels that we have a really good team with JCJ and Gilbain. And then lastly, and I think, I think this committee, this board knows, is that the JBC, along with the city council, is considering a youth recreation facility to replace the aging Connie Bean Center, and locating that facility adjacent with the gymnasium that we're building for the Portsmouth Middle School. And I can't report out too much, except what we're trying to do is figure out how much that we can do now in pre-planning, perhaps taking advantage of some of the geotechnical work that's being done on the site, and supplementing that by considering the adjacent land that would house the, this second gymnasium effectively for the recreation center. And then if the, if the city council gives direction to the JBC is to consider additional preliminary stuff, or in fact, possible getting alternative bids for not only the middle school, but, but the middle school and the, the youth recreation facility. So stay tuned on that. I mean, it's, I'll report back on the next meeting as, as progress is made on that. In some ways, the ball's in the city council's court, but we're trying to work collaboratively with them. And, and what I can tell you is that, and they understand this, is that we will do it in a way that isn't going to jeopardize the schedule or the, the project for delivering a middle school as requested by the school board. So you'll be involved in every step of the way. So, and Leslie, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, or Steve, or Ed, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yes, Kent?
Several of them. One is, is that as we just got the JCN study in regards to the buildings, I mean, and we just got it tonight, so there's a number of things that come up that start to make me question, and I'll go through them in a second. But, you know, safety does become first, and until, and I do think it's a responsibility, I know we went through the exercise two or three times at the high school, of how we actually were going to do the students. Food service was actually one of the biggest hurdles that we had. Prior to the board having an approval of the student movement program, there was actually a vote taken to make sure, because you have, we had to take into that into consideration, and how, how students would be fed, because your cafeteria's going to be down at X period of time and so forth. So I'm going to formally request that somewhere we take a vote of this transforming of the students and how the student body works, because it is not just the safety, it is how the daily education, because we're talking for an 18-month period, some type of a layout of what the JBC and those that are working for the city to have a full understanding. I mean, I have to say, the little bit I did read, and there are the four recommendations on page four, it's stating that, you know, the JSN is saying that they don't see a safety issue, but they do recommend those four elements in the back be done, and I would concur that those need to be done. But I think when I go to page five, and I know, and believe me, I never like to see sensationalism, but we have had a number of things throughout the world this past year, and I, I'm a little concerned that all of a sudden, the IBC code, which totally changed the outcome of what the high school could be. The high school could not be built in the manner it was first said, because we did not beat, at that time was considered BOKA codes, and now it falls under as IBC. And we fall on a quake line. The quake line goes right through the city. It is an active quake line. So I think that's something that this board needs to have discussion of. When I see something that says, well, yeah, it should have earthquake-type stuff done, but it, or could, it might, I'm unclear exactly what they're saying here, but then I read it's cost prohibitive, that catches my eye. But again, this is just looking at it today, Dexter. I mean, I haven't had a chance to...
I mean, I haven't, this is the first I've seen of it, and I have no idea JCJ's, this was dated...
Yeah, and it's a two-year-old...
2008.
Right.
And there's been an awful lot of work that I know JCJ has done from a geotechnical perspective. There's a, there's a consulting firm right now. But what I can, I guess what I can tell you is, because you raised a couple of points, as, as, as the JBC puts together its project plan, which will include phasing, one of the things that they will recommend for this, this board's approval is... the things that they will recommend for this, this board's approval is whether or not the, the students remain in, in the old part of the existing building, or whether they may be housed in, in modulators onsite. And that's a decision that this board will make, but it's a recommendation that JBC will make after working with the architects and the, and the construction manager.
Prior to June, I guess, is there a timeline that you think that would be, not the whole-
The phasing, the phasing should, that, that phasing decision should be done by April. And so we'll be bringing back a recommendation to this board as it affects students. Now, to the extent that that phasing also affects lunch the way it did at the high school, then that would also be a decision that this board would make. But, but the reality is, we don't believe it will. Based on everything we've seen now on how they're thinking of phasing it, is that there'll, there'll be continuous lunches available throughout the, the construction period.
Yeah, I just know when we did-
But the point is, is the JBC, and we've spent a lot of time as a committee clarifying roles and responsibilities, that there is a document that exists for roles and responsibilities. I don't know if this is, is handed out to this group or not.
Yes.
It has. And so what we've tried to clarify is the role of the JBC and its decisions and, and the decisions that come to this board. And effectively, anything that affects the, the education of the students or the program that changes it, comes to this board for approval. And, and I'll assure you, because Leslie and Lisa wouldn't let me get away with it, not that Ed or Steve would, but I'll assure you that that will come to, come to this board.
Moving on to the other two subjects. One is, is that with the, because the REC board has been constantly updated in regards to whether they put in certain pilings, or they put some type of, you know, something within that second gymnasium. You know, there's been certain discussions of what, you know, again, it's like you said, well, is that, you know, the city council is making some determinations of what it may or may not want to do at this time. Is that, I made this point at the last REC board meeting, that we eliminated a gym facility down there not that long ago, which was the JFK, which, you know, is now where the current library is. And I, I really hope that, you know, it may be a different umbrella as you, as the JBC gets it back, because it really won't belong to the school, but it'll be a, a joint project at the same time. Is that that's given consideration of how, you know, we affected, because we're bringing back, everybody thinks we're, we're going to be moving one gym, but in the earlier discussions of when the JFK went down, well, someday we're going to replace this building. So again, we're not getting, we're not getting anything more, we're actually still minus that type of facility.
Yeah, and I don't, and Ken, I don't want to get ahead of the story, but, but, because there are decisions that the city council needs to make, but, but obviously, one of the things that we would want to take advantage of if we can, is why we're driving pilings for the, the addition, which includes a gymnasium. It would probably make sense to drive the pilings now for, for the, for the, the youth recreation facility, that second gymnasium that would attach.
And that's exactly what was sent to the-
Do it now.
That was exactly what was sent to the rec board.
And, and what we would hope is that the, the city sees clear that it makes sense to, to spend that little extra money now, even if you don't build the gymnasium or the, the rec, until five years from now.
And they even discussed-
And those are sorts of the discussions that they have to sort out and, and give us direction. And, and we believe, I mean, we hope that we can fit that in with, with, with the plan that we have, again, to deliver the middle school, and we think we can.
And to follow along with that is that there has been discussion, you know, how even, you know, the school versus the rec and how the timing and all that. So there, there has been preliminary discussion, which is a good thing.
And you guys, and the rec board has been, been actively involved in that, as you know.
Yep, been discussing. The last one is, is as we get towards the summertime here, I know that the turf field is a big discussion and the JBC is there. And it has been brought to my attention, and I'm going to bring it up tonight, I really feel that as that's done, JBC through, whether it be Gillespie or whoever they do it, there has to be a soil testing upon that soil. It is no small secret in this town, I think certain times we have skirted the issue, that that fill back in 1970 comes exactly from the same place certain groups in this town did not want the ash to come from. That is all filled, that, you know, people have got to have the history that Portsmouth High School football did not begin there until 1971-ish, I believe it was, probably about the same time Linda may have been there, I believe. Yeah. I, I was a couple of years later. And then that they played football downtown. That was ash that was brought up for all levels of those fields, because those fields, if you look at them, were elevated at a water level and were brought up at different, if you look at the field hockey, the soccer and so forth. And, and so if we're disturbing that, just like we would be disturbing it if we did anything up in, on, on the Jones Avenue site, I would request that, you know, we have some type, I'm, I'm sure somewhere the city would have documentation, whether that is a truism or whether it needs to make sure that it has been approved. And I don't know how far deep and how deep an envelope was ever made the first time around. We're talking about, again, I believe 69 to 71 is when it was actually being done at that time. Thank you.
Sure.
Are you talking about alumni field?
Ah, the whole, the whole athletic complex was filled that was brought down from the incinerator plant at that time.
You're talking about the high school?
At the high school.
The high school.
At the high school.
Alumni.
High school.
I thought we were talking about the middle school on that.
Well, no, I said the, the all-purpose field, which is, the all-purpose field is going to be located, which is part, the turf field.
Okay.
All, all fields at the high school were-
Yes, I understand that, but I, yes, thank you.
Were capped-type ashes. So again, I want to make sure that we get some discussion back prior to that. And, and just an approval for safety and health.
Right.
I have one quick question, if nobody else does.
Okay, so one last question then. So if the city council does decide to, from their perspective, move forward on this youth recreation facility-
Yep.
-at the middle school, that decision has to come back to this board to approve it?
I don't, I don't think so. I, I don't, I don't think we have the authority, as long as it doesn't affect the school program, then, or, or what we've, what the JBC has committed to the school to deliver, then I don't think it does. I, I don't think this, and, and legal counsel can give us an opinion, but I don't think this board has any-
I think we actually might need a legal counsel on that, because my understanding was that when, especially because it's, it's on the property that was part of eminent domain, and once that was handed over to the school department, the school department-
It may be. I mean, I-
And then it impacts the parking plan, so we don't want to-
For sure it does, and so, I mean, we, at, at that point, we'll have to get a legal opinion of, of what, what the actual approval process is.
Okay.
And I'm not a lawyer and I'm not going to-
No, but it would be helpful to have that before we propose it.
Yeah, absolutely. We should, we, we'll, we'll check that out.
Okay.
And, and Miss, just to follow that, I think discussion has come is, you know, yeah, we may have the building, but you have heating, you have electricity, you have water use and so forth, that, you know, does it come in, you know, you're not going to separately meter that, so how, how does that, that budgetary umbrella fall onto us?
I, I would, I would, I would love to be able to have that problem.
Okay.
I hope, I hope we do, but you're right, there's all sorts of details that would need to be laid out. So there'll be more-
Okay.
Well, if the buildings fall into the city, you know, after this facility committee, it won't matter.
Well, that's actually, if, if there is a common maintenance program, then-
That's true.
-then some of that stuff gets, some of those issues get alleviated, but not all of them.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much-
Yep.
-for that in-depth report.
I didn't mean to, but I couldn't, I couldn't help myself, Mr. Chairman.
So moving on to technology, I'll take that and Ed could help fill in. We met on March 3rd with Susan Burrell, and basically, she's been soliciting information from a variety of sources to do sort of a technology audit. We're moving forward on that. I think we're definitely going to do that. It's just, and she's also now looking into getting some templates for RFPs. We don't want to get too far ahead to, to make sure we have enough money to pay for it when we get to that point, but she's got a good handful of companies, large and small. You know, large companies who've done this, smaller companies who've done this. And so that kind of decision will be made, because the smaller companies actually are more tempting. They really look more, not just at questions of inventory, but really like professional development and implementation and in the classroom instruction, so we're having that kind of discussion.
Can I ask a question on that?
Yeah.
So, so are you coming at it both ways from a, from a, because just based on your last comment? So potentially, you're looking at the infrastructure-
Yes, we definitely-
But also then, the, the use of technology in the classroom?
The use of technology in-
And delivering, and delivering education in the classroom?
Correct.
So you're actually looking at both?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Terrific. That's great.
Did I leave anything out?
I don't believe so.
Because it was, that was our last meeting. Okay. Athletics, extracurricular, anything going on?
Arts and athletics. We haven't met since our last meeting, but a couple of things I did want to say. The, our upcoming meeting is April 13th, and we've kind of structured them to be seasonal, so the beginning of the year, sort of the winter season, and then upcoming spring athletics and arts. So our meeting is April 13th, and we'll be talking with the superintendent about who else to invite to that. Last time Russ was there with us, and maybe we want to invite Wendell this time, or somebody that, you know, can speak to the arts a little bit more.
Is there a time for that meeting?
Five to six.
Five to six. It's before our-
Okay. Thank you.
And I also am thinking that we might want to be the liaison between what Jeff Collins was talking about with the hockey team and bring some of that information back here as he's getting information. That might be a role for this committee. So that's something that we can talk more about with superintendent, but it seems like that might be appropriate. And maybe we need to be looking at whether there are policies or procedures that need to be put in place or need to be looked at in light of what has happened.
Okay.
So that's something I think we'll be talking about. On the 13th, from five to six.
In the evening, not the morning.
In the evening, not the morning.
Five to six will be your case.
Yeah, right.
Well, this way you can get to work on time.
Yeah, that's why it's in the evening.
Facilities.
Yes, Lisa Sweet's not here. They did meet actually Wednesday, April 7th. Basically got an update on all the storm damage, which Steve has covered. Ken Lynch, he also provided an update on the expected costs of completing that K5 facilities assessment. I think once those CIP funds are ultimately approved, then an RFP will go out in late June, and the expectation is the work that'll get completed by the end of August, early September around the needs assessment. Steve also noted the district is seeking to partner with the city and take advantage of a reduction in energy prices or some two cents per unit cost with natural gas. Ken Lynch, he also discussed, we're now as a district participating with New Hampshire DOE's Healthy Schools Initiative, really to address some issues around indoor air quality at both Little Harbor and Don Darrow, which are the two pilot schools. And lastly, there was some discussion about the turf field at the, at the high school and basically waiting for the CM to come on board and, and take, get us going on that. Did I say April 7th was the next meeting?
Yep.
What, what was I thinking? That's our next meeting, will be April 7th. So mark it on your calendars.
So just two other quick little things. We do have, you know, I guess I do have a little concern about the number of committees we have, because we only have nine people serve on all these committees.
And one superintendent?
But the K5 facilities committee, which we still, which we've established, I think we're waiting to see if there's CIP money that would actually then move forward to hire a company to come in and do the assessment. Is that where we are with that?
Right. We're expecting it to happen, right. Yes, true.
Okay. So that's moving forward. And then just on that same note, the mayor's Blue Ribbon Committee on efficiencies, I, he's, he's established it and he's looking for three members each, and I've spoken to Rebecca and to Carol, who definitely said that they're interested, that they would do it. And so I have a third, a third seat that I talked to one member, but I haven't confirmed that yet, so. And I haven't heard anything about dates or when it will start, but I think everybody's hot for this thing to move forward, so.
Mitch, what do you know about the, the members from the public?
Nothing.
Nothing, okay.
I should talk, I'll talk to the mayor again, find out.
Okay, because I know people have been asking.
Yeah, I imagine-
As you said, people are very interested in-
Right. And I, I imagine he'll consider the same process that he always does, so that people would need to put an application in and then-
Right. Okay, good.
Choose from that pool.
Okay.
Leslie.
I had just a couple of things as well. First of all, have we gotten any feedback from city council about questions for our upcoming work session?
The questions they were going to provide us, I have not received those at all, no. Nothing yet, Leslie.
Okay. I just want to keep putting that out there, that we asked and I want the public to know we've asked for those questions.
Well, I know Tom has sent out a memo to the, to the council asking that question, so whether he got responses, I don't know.
Okay. And tomorrow night is our JBC meeting for Dexter, myself and Lisa, and Ed will be going to the high school-
Yes.
-to do a similar presentation that he did last night for the PTA, what's called the PAC at the high school. And I'm wondering if there are any other school board members who aren't able to go tomorrow night, because it was very helpful to have school board members there at the PTA meeting last night at Little Harbor. So for Dexter, Lisa and I, we'll be at the JBC, but I'm just putting it out there that it's tomorrow night at the high school, and if anybody can go-
And it's seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock.
Six, six thirty, I was told.
Was it six thirty?
Six thirty.
Okay.
I have rec board tomorrow.
Leslie, are non-public today, was it six?
I have it written down.
I will try.
I have seven o'clock here.
I'll try to be a little jumpy.
So. I'm, I'm sorry Dexter, what was that?
No, no.
I have seven o'clock written down, so we might want to check that. Amy, do you remember?
I don't remember when.
Okay.
Okay.
I wrote, I think, I'm pretty sure I wrote it down from Amy's email.
For-
Amy sent out an email for confirmation of all those, so I'm pretty sure I wrote it down from her email, so I think it's seven o'clock. But we might want to check that. Anyway, if people could go, it's very helpful to have school board members there, because there's lots of questions. And Ed did a fantastic presentation last night for parents, and it's very, very helpful. And it's going to be a whole new crowd of people, because it's going to be high school parents, and, you know, elementary school was a long time ago for that, for many of them, so I think it'd be helpful if anybody could be there.
Thank you. Okay. Yes, Rebecca.
I just want to confirm, our next meeting is Tuesday, the 23rd, and we're meeting at 5:30.
Yeah, so you have a retreat scheduled on the 23rd, which will take place early in the culinary atrium, and there is, I'll send out an email tomorrow about the potential to have that non-meeting with council next Tuesday. See if we have a quorum, we'll have, you know, the HR people, Tom Flygar, available, and then, you know, kind of, then have a conversation as we had earlier this evening.
And, and then I have that our meeting is at seven at the middle school, or has that been changed to the high school?
Those things, those, and places have been switched, because you're going to have a potluck dinner, and so I'm, you know, on the 23rd, this retreat, we're honoring Kent LaPage's request that we all bring something to the table to eat.
We can't wait to see what you're bringing, Kent.
I bet Kent's bringing-
Yeah, I brought good food the last time.
Not, not at the middle school, at the culinary atrium.
Right, so I have down that we have the retreat at 5:30 and then our meeting at seven at the middle school, but the meeting at the middle school is now at the high school, so we're just staying at the high school.
That's it.
Okay.
So all retreat.
All things are retreat.
And can I be exempt from the potluck, because I don't want to poison anybody?